Gretchen.
Okay, well, seeing it were eight oh four and packed house, nice everyone turned up. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all their special assessments and taxing districts for which said Board so acts is now meeting a regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at that assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Supervisor Gitlin, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
With pleasure.
Everybody right hand over your card. If you're in uniform, you may salute, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in whose name stands the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor, are there any reportable actions from closed session?
Yes, I just need to report that by unanimous vote, the Board has elected to reinstate the Chief Probation Officer. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any introduction of new employees at this point? Okay, seeing no introductions. At this point, I'll request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Okay. So at this point, we're going to go on to, we'll hear brief reports and announcements from board members related to programs, projects, travel, and committees. Supervisor Finnegan, would you like to start?
Sure, thank you. Very briefly, it's only been a week, so after our last meeting, I went to Sacramento, there was a reception that was sponsored by the California State Association of Supervisors to try to mix some of the new supervisors with, more importantly, the new legislators, the new members of the Assembly and the Senate that were elected. So we had a reception for that. Then the next morning, had a breakfast meeting with the County Councils Association, trying to have more formalize, if you will, the relationship between the county councils and the state association, and as well as passing it down to the county supervisors. Then we had our state association board meeting, talked about the new Affordable Care Act, had quite a discussion over the implementation, whether it was to be the state option or the county option, or what we were trying to do is negotiate perhaps a hybrid for a couple of counties that thought it would be more beneficial, so it wouldn't be one or none. Then we had reports out from the Health and Human Services, the Transportation Committee, the Housing Committee, and Ag and National Resources, formed our policy, formed our talking points for both state legislation as well as federal legislation. And then the state association passed the resolution, which we did last week, which was declaring the year of the child, and stating that in all the work that we do, that it will be the purpose and the eye towards, how does it benefit the children, asking the children, or asking the question, how are the children? And whether it's legislation, budgets, policies, the question needs to be asked, how does it affect the children? We're going to be expanding on that. There was a couple of good ideas that passed unanimously that came forward. Some counties, like San Mateo County, have actually a Children's Bill of Rights that we will be picking other good ideas from other counties. And then Contra Costa County actually has, when we do things that come to, from department heads, for example, that come on our agenda, there are certain sign-offs, certain check-offs. One might be from the county council, one might be from the CIO, one is going to be from the fiscal implications of how it affects, so it goes through a myriad of different offices before it gets to the Board for action. That's, Contra Costa County actually has a sign-off that asks four or five questions of, how does it affect the children? Financially, policy-wise, whatnot. So I'll be bringing that forward to this Board, as well as to CSAC in general, so following through on the promise to heighten the awareness of, how are our children? And that was it.
All right, thank you. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, since it has only been a week, my primary meeting was the Historical Society, where we are in the process of putting a new roof on the shed at the lighthouse, because it blew off in the last major storm. And also, the need to move to LED lighting, since the current lights that light the lantern are no longer manufactured, so we're going to have to do that. And it's going to be a cost, but it's something that needs to be done, so we can keep the light on. And then I've been reading quite a bit about the sequestration that's going to happen, or might happen, in relationship to our Redwood Park Association.
All right, thank you. If I can remind everyone in the audience, please turn your phones off. That is the policy of the Board, that you don't receive phone calls during the middle of the meeting, so. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. As everybody said, it's only been a week since our last meeting, so we just had a couple of meetings. Had an RCD meeting at Smith River. The discussion mainly was around the Ratty Creek Fish Hatchery, and you know, what's going on there. We had some talks on fish counting. Zach Larson, who was not there, who normally does, or I shouldn't say normally attends, but does attend frequently, was not there to answer any questions, although he did give a report to the Board at our last meeting, was very informative. So they're always concerned with water quality and water runoff, so those discussions continue on. Had a LAFCO meeting yesterday, where we reappointed Sparky Countess as our member-at-large. Again, he's been on the Board for a while, and his input is very good, and he's very knowledgeable, so I'm glad to have him back. We did have three applications, so that's unusual. Usually, it's fairly hard to fill that position. But that's about it for me. It was a pretty light week.
Okay, Supervisor Gitlin?
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. First of all, again, I'll repeat the obvious short week, but a few things happened. I went down for some CSAC training, and I'm going to make a commitment to do this. I'm going to actually say what the acronym means, so California State Association of Counties. So all of you in the public know that it's not a separate language, but we went down for some California State Association of Counties training, which is very valuable. And again, I want to congratulate our new President of 58 Counties, and that Representative, Supervisor Finnegan. Again, my hat's off to you. I don't think people realize that there are quite, there's about, slightly under, help me out Supervisor Finnegan, about 296 supervisors in the state of California, is that right? Okay, so again, my congratulations to Dave, and we also had a very good training, I found it very helpful. And I joined one of the committees, I've been thinking about which one, and we're going to put our efforts into Justice and Administration Committee for the California State Association of Counties and Lobby, on behalf of changing some of the things that are going on, that can be changed in our way we apply our justice here. Again, with Supervisor Hemmingson attended the Local Area Formation Commission, LAFCO, and again, congratulations, Sparky Countess, reappointed, his input is invaluable. Also, want to make note that with all these repairs on the lighthouse, we do have a second lighthouse, and that's one out, St. George Reef Lighthouse. And in the coming weeks, I'm going to be in meeting with federal and state officials to see how we can continue our renovation efforts. As you know, they've been stalled. Caltrans aeronautical unit has put the K-Bosh on any more future helicopter flights out there. And that beautiful Proud Lady sits three and a half miles out into the ocean, is sitting there rusting, and we're going to be involved with federal and state officials to see if we can change that. So having said that, it was a short week, and thank you very much, Chair Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and once again, it's only been a week since the last meeting, so it was, I was down at CSAC also with Supervisor Finnegan and Supervisor Gitlin. It was a busy, and I've got to congratulate President Finnegan on really, actually a really well-run meeting, and we didn't get too sideways on some of the other supervisors' comments, but it's, after that meeting, I basically had a chance to meet with the new Director of Fishing Game, Chuck Bonham, and I did bring up the issue with Ratty Creek Fish Hatchery, and the fact that we are pushing to have the fish released further up the river at the forks. He seemed amenable to having a conversation, although he did mention there are lawsuits right now popped up against Fishing Game in some of these items. So we're going to continue to have that conversation, dialogue with them. After that, had a meeting with the new Director of State Parks, Major General Jackson. Pretty interesting meeting, he's all about accountability. He's a two-star general from the Marines, and we're looking forward to getting him up here. We want to continue to have a dialogue with parks, and I think Major General Jackson will definitely, it's kind of a fresh breath of air, so to speak, so it was good to start that dialogue. Had, stopped by Assembly Member Dally's office to get a copy of the Secure Rule Schools, the Assembly Joint Resolution encouraging Congress to re-initiate Secure Rule Schools, which for Del Norte County is about two and a half million, and part of a roads department as well as the schools budget. Also, had a lengthy meeting with Chief of Staff David Reed with State Senator Nielsen's office. We did bring up the payment in lieu of taxes money, PILT money that Fishing Game owes the county, that has been budgeted but not appropriated. So if you can talk about semantics, this has been going on, it's well over $200,000 that the county's owed. And that's for the land that Fishing Game has within the county. I had that same conversation with Director Bonham also, is that we are going to push for that. $200,000 in this community goes much further along than in other counties. Also, stopped by Assembly Member Chusbro's office as well, to bring up the same thing, the PILT money is something important, that we need to continue to work on getting, especially if they're going to own land in the county. Supervisor Finnegan?
No, I didn't mean.
Oh, okay. Other than that, let's see, I think that is, it was a long, long day that day in Sacramento. Came back on Friday morning at the six o'clock flight, and the flight was on time, so that was good, that was encouraging. Got here, and then went out, met with Water Crawley Board out in Smith River, with, the Smith River bulb growers were showing, they really are cutting-edge in terms of reducing the pesticides that they have used. They are, their protocol is looked at within the state and federally, in terms of how they go about growing the bulbs, and really to dispel a lot of myths that are out there right now. One of the things they talked about is people sometimes will drive by, and when they're fumigating, and they see these big clouds of, well, it's not the pesticide they use turns to gas immediately, it's not something you see. What you see is the moisture, when they're tilling the ground, that comes up. There's a lot of misinformation out there, that the bulb growers did a great job, it was really educational for me. I know they are looking at some point of putting some educational chamber mixer together, they did it about 10 years ago. It's an important industry in their community, and it's good to have water quality there to be on the same page. So I appreciate them for putting that together. Okay, so, yes.
If I could, just, since I noticed some in the audience, and even more will be paying attention later on on the TV, amazing amount of communication that has been going on, both verbal as well as through emails with the Neighborhood Watch people out on the Parkway area, specifically Dundas and Ferndale. And it's because of their efforts that they are making some headway. And I would encourage all of you to, if not join one, form one Neighborhood Watch, you can make a difference in your own neighborhood, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, due to the, so how many people in the audience, and I think I know the answer to this already, but how many are here for item number four on the agenda? Okay, so what we will do is, I will pull that off, we'll discuss it separately, so we can get along with some of the county business here in addition to that, because there is quite a bit of attention on that, and it's an important topic. So at this point, we'll listen to a brief report from County Administrator Officer Serena.
Again, very briefly, we've had multiple meetings with the grand jury on different departments, mostly informational, very positive meetings, particularly Recreation Administration and the Office of Emergency Services. And like I said, those are informational meetings, not any specific issues. Been having a few negotiation meetings, and have been working on an extension on the Point St. George project, as I mentioned before. Looks like we'll probably have one approved here pretty soon, in order to deal with the wetland mitigation for the coastal trail. Been assisting with some issues in the Community Development Department on occasion, dealing with some miscellaneous evaluations of personnel, and researching some issues for supervisors as needed, along with some of the day-to-day issues and constituent issues that come up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this point, since we're still short of a public comment period, I will entertain a motion to accept all items minus number four from the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, any public comment on consent agenda items only minus number four, which we're going to discuss separately? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment. Tony, could you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, we'll go on to item number seven, Budget Transfer. I'll entertain a motion to accept the budget transfer.
Move to approve.
Second.
So move in second. Any public comment on the budget transfer? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor, or Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, so the rest of the items are timed, so we are going to go to number four right now, which is Review and Approve Draft Resolution in Support of the Second Amendment and the Right of the People to Keep and Bear Arms, as requested by Supervisor Gitlin. Supervisor Gitlin, if you'd...
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. This resolution owes its genesis to Eldorado County, and Supervisor Nuttall in Eldorado County, who generated this, after a good deal of attention has been brought to our Second Amendment, the right to bear arms. So I want to give appropriate credit, it was recently passed by Siskiyou County, with some changes, of course, reflecting that. And again, appropriate credit to Supervisor Marcia Armstrong in Siskiyou County. And it came to my attention, and I said, well, it's kind of meandering its way through the street, the state, I should say, and it's now in front of us, and I think it's appropriate to draw attention to the fact that we have the Second Amendment, and how important it is. And I want to just relate a quote to you from, "Of the four wars in my lifetime, none came about because the United States was too strong." Ronald Reagan. And I want to echo that. So it's an honor to introduce this resolution and support it, and with the Chair's permission, I'd like to read it.
Well, let's, we're going to wait to actually pass it, to read it, so at this point, I will entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Okay, at this point, we'll open a public comment. If you're planning on speaking, please, Tony, do we have a list going? Yeah. If you could come up, sign your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Keep in mind, there are a lot of people here, so if you're going to repeat what the first person said, or the person before you, then I would encourage you to be brief in the process, because everyone needs a shot at the mic that wants to speak. So at this point, I will open for anybody with public comment regarding this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Bill Lonsdale, and I live in Crescent City. I'm here because I have a question about whether or not your Board's consideration, or passage, or defeat of this resolution is either necessary or appropriate. At the outset, let me say that I probably agree with everybody in this room, that the anti-gun lobby, and members of Congress, and people who are talking about what they want to do with gun control, have overreached. It's outrageous what's being proposed. I believe in the Second Amendment, I believe in most of the things that the people in this room probably will tell you they believe in as well. My question is not whether or not we should oppose what's going on, there are lots of ways to oppose it. There are more than 50 people probably in this room. Fifty letters to congressmen and representatives, 50 contributions to the NRA, or anybody else who's helping to defeat this stuff, will do a heck of a lot more good than a resolution from your Board. I've done that, and I urge everybody in this room to do that. But whether it's necessary for your Board, or appropriate for your Board, to pass a resolution on this question, is what I'm asking. Just because somebody else has done it, doesn't make it right. Just because there's an outpouring of sentiment about it, doesn't make it something that you have to do. You're setting policy, you're taking a position for the county. And thus far, with a couple of notable exceptions in the past five or six years that I've been following what your Board and your predecessors have done, these kinds of measures have not succeeded. I like Mr. Gitlin personally, I talked with him for, I guess, seven hours total, over the course of his campaign, in my living room.
Thirteen hours.
Thirteen hours, he keeps good track. And I applaud the energy that he's bringing to the Board. But as I told him when we were talking, there were two reasons why I voted for his opponent. One was the long service he'd given to our, that's not for me, is it? The long service that he'd given, that his opponent had given to our neighborhood. And second, because I felt he was coming to this with a propensity to introduce a national agenda into the proceedings of a local Board. And I would urge your Board, if that's the case, to resist it. The other thing that strikes me is, having to take a vote on this resolution disadvantages one or more of your colleagues, because for procedural reasons, or whatever reasons, they may be disinclined to vote for the resolution. Whereupon, in the next election, they will be vilified and replaced by somebody who agrees with Mr. Gitlin. And if that's the way you want your Board to go in the future, so be it. But I would urge you to resist that. The best solution to this problem today is to have the resolution fail for lack of a second. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
If you've got any public comment, please go ahead and line up over here, if there is going to be, no, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a nation founded under God. Second Amendment was passed by godly men, and I want to call the Board's attention to a scripture from the Old Testament. Proverbs 29:2 says, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked beareth rule, the people mourn." Your burden, on you today, is to get America rejoicing again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Gilbert Guarez. I'm a Crescent City resident, I live in the county. I just want to say that Senator Feinstein and President Obama talk about taking your guns, but they need to think about something. They swore an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, and the Second Amendment gives every individual the right to protect themselves from the government. And when they talk about guns killing kids in school, they need to think about all the wars that have been created, and how many people have been killed through Hitlers, Mussolini, all of these people that killed people that didn't have guns. And that's the reason that the Constitution of the United States said each and every individual needs to have protection, like Switzerland, or some countries like that. There is no problem in controlling the government, because you guys work for us. And that's it, there's no question.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
And ladies. My name is Terrell Gray, I live in Crescent City. And after 73 years, it's been made plain to me that government is the problem, and you people are government. And that's not because you're bad people, it's because probably you really don't have time to dig into the information. So I have brought it with you, I'm not going to sit here and read all of this, but if it's all right, I'll, it's not packaged, so I'll have to hand it out, but if I may be allowed to do that.
Yeah, I mean, Tony.
And then, I don't believe there's too much still there. It's just, you know, so you have background on why we feel the way we do. Our very first President made it very clear that guns were necessary part of freedom. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker. You can just come up to the mic. If anybody's planning on speaking, please come over, and if you could write your name down, if we're going to have a lot of people, or just line up there on the edge, that's a good starting point. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hadn't planned to speak today, but I was aware of the resolution.
Steve, you might announce your name for the record.
Steve Odell, I'm a resident of Crescent City. And the first gentleman that spoke, spoke to the fact whether or not we should even address the situation. And the way I see the problem, a lot of other people may see the same way, is that the federal government, from the top down, is trying to legislate gun control in their particular way they are planning it. And I see this resolution, this body, as a bottom-up approach at making a grassroots position stand against that government that wants to take away our gun rights. And so, the very least that this would do, would be a statement from the people, at the very base root of our, of who we are as a community, to tell them that we don't like what they're proposing. And so, I see this as a voice of the people, at the very grassroots level, the bottom round level, saying that we don't want this. And so, all due respect to the gentleman that says that it wouldn't do anything, or whether or not we should, I disagree with that. I think we should make a statement. Because in the end, it's a statement of the federal government imposing their will on the states, and at the very level, the smallest levels of government. And we should make a statement saying, we don't agree with this. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Rusty Sala. I want to share with the people in this room, you as well, this is my feelings, okay? And it's talking about human rights. You know, take note and listen to what I got to say, because it's very important. The basic source of human rights are either God-given, or part of a, God-given as part of a divine plan, or they're granted by government as part of a political plan. If we accept this, the premise that human rights are granted by government, then we need to be willing to accept the corollary, that they can also be denied by government. I for one, and I agree with this 100%, I will never accept this premise. Thomas Jefferson, as founded in the Declaration of Independence, said, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among this, among these is life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." I know everybody's heard this before. We need to understand that people, us as a group, we're superior to the government. We created the government.
Hey, Rusty?
Yes.
You're going to have to speak into the mic, you're actually on film also right now, so if you're looking backwards, what you say is not going to be recorded. So if you're looking backwards, what you say is not going to be recorded.
That's fine. Okay. People are superior to their governments that they form. Since God created people with certain inalienable rights, and they in turn created the government to help secure and safeguard these rights, it follows that people are superior to the creature they created. Governments should have limited powers. Understand, let's see. The basic, to our understanding of the Constitution, is that governments should only have limited powers. The important thing to keep in mind is that the people who created their government can give that government only such powers as they themselves have in the first place. Obviously, they cannot give what they do not possess. You know, I just want you to know that, you know, I kind of agree with the guy. I don't even know why we're having this discussion. You know, the Constitution was formed through the inspiration of God. I don't know if you guys believe in God or not, but I do. It was an inspired document. And I'm thankful to be a citizen of this country and to have the rights and freedoms I have. I don't think, you know, people -- that's what makes America great. You have a right to choose, to make choices. You know, what's next? You know, we're in here discussing the Second Amendment rights. You know, you look at the things going on in the world today politically, especially in our country.
Rusty, you're going to need to wrap it up here, too.
Okay.
Because you're getting close to the end of the three minutes.
Okay. Well, I'll wrap it up. I'm just saying that, you know what? You guys work for us, okay? Our opinion, I think I stand for a lot of people in this room. I don't know why we're having this discussion, but I for one, I will never stand for giving away my Second Amendment rights, okay? That's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker.
Members of the board, my name's Bill Kinsey. And I've got twenty-four and a half years of law enforcement experience. I support your resolution. I think it's a great idea. We need to tell our federal government to pound sand on their gun-grabbing attempt. The Second Amendment's clear. We have the right to keep and bear arms. They don't like it that we have power. They want to take that power away. This is a power grab, but it's not a gun grab. They want to disarm the people so they can control us. That's the way I see it. So I support your resolution. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker. Mr. Bowing. I think you're next. You're up.
Well, I hope you'll bear with me. I didn't bring my hearing aids. I threw them away. They don't do any good, anyway. I can hear everything you guys say, but I can understand very little. I try to piece it together. So if I repeat what others have said, bear with me. I'm very, very, almost to the point of being paranoid about the way that this is moving to outlaw certain firearms, maybe all firearms eventually. I think we're all familiar with the legislation that's been submitted by Senator Feinstein. To go even further than that, a state senator, ye, I believe he's a state senator, has submitted legislation whereby an insertable magazine in a gun will be outlawed, which will effectively outlaw all semi-automatic guns, whether long or handheld. Modern politicians rely so much on legal ease and, well, I think the Obamacare legislation would probably be a good example of what I'm trying to say. Over 2,000 pages to get a few points across. Our founding fathers were precise, to the point, and eloquent in their simplicity. The part of the Second Amendment that isn't spoken about very much, four words, very eloquent, shall not be abridged. Period. Simple. That would seem to nullify all these acts of violation of the Second Amendment, in my opinion. So we need to really keep that in mind. I certainly encourage our board to reaffirm the position of supporting the Second Amendment. Let's just remember those four words, shall not be abridged. It's so simple. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good morning. My name's Dale McGirt. I own Full Armor Firearms here in Crescent City. Just to let you guys know, I'm in support of the resolution, 110%. Not because I own the business or I sell firearms, but I know how regulated firearms are, okay? If anybody is from the board would like to come and see the regulations that we have there that California and the federal government has put forth to regulate the sale and distribution of firearms. They have California Safe Affidavits. Everybody that comes in and buys a firearm has to sign an affidavit saying they obtained a secure safety device to house that firearm while it's in your personal possession. It's very well-regulated. The government has it regulated upon regulations, upon laws that supersede laws that sometimes we don't even know how many laws there are to regulate the firearms because there's just a plethora of laws that do that. Steve Odell was talking about the steps that us as little people of Crescent City, we need to make a stand. It's the little people. There was one mother that stood up against drunk driving. And look what an impact that she has made on America as it is today. We as Crescent City, we have that right to be the little person that starts the -- we're going to support our Second Amendment rights. We have the rights to bear arms. When we start taking things away from people that, whether it's you agree with it or you don't, I can lay a gun down here right now and it will not kill anybody. The convicts will always have guns. You can go to Fresno, California right now. I can't purchase firearms to save my life right now. There's just not that many out there distributors that have them, okay? We have to fight to find the firearms due to the big scare that's going on right now, okay? But you can go on the streets right now and I can buy a hundred guns within a minute off the black market. We're not going to stop it. It's like drugs. There's still going to be drugs. No matter how many laws you put in place, the drug addicts are still going to get drugs. The criminals are going to get guns. I've seen it time and time again. If my business fails tomorrow, that's okay. I'm not here to promote business or anything whatsoever. It's, we are little people. And if Crescent City doesn't make a stand, who's the next? You don't believe in abortion? Make the stand. It takes that one person. You know, the one mother has put in everything that she possibly could, and now how many lives do we save by drunk drivers by having the power to take their driver's license? Whatever we have to do, I vote that you guys stand up for the little people, you know? It's all right. People's died for this. We've got veterans out here that have sacrificed their lives. And with what? A firearm. With a firearm. Obama has a firearm. What makes his life any more important than mine or yours? Feinstein, she has firearms. Have her give up her entourage of guards. Have President Obama give up his entourage of guards. His life is no more important than any of ours that are sitting here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, board. My name's Ron Mayhew. I'm a resident here in Del Norte. Been one for about 22 years. Pay my taxes, and I'm an honest man, and I'm a Christian. I just want to let you know that I haven't read the resolution, but I do have a concealed weapons permit I do carry, and I do want to keep that. And I trust that you guys have read that resolution and you knew best to vote for it or not. So my support is for the Second Amendment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? Sheriff Wilson.
Yeah. No. I just want to express my support for the resolution that you proposed and put forward, largely because I'm not so concerned about what we may see federally because California already has some of the strongest and stiffest gun regulations. But what I am concerned about is the resolutions that we've seen proposed in Sacramento that definitely do abridge your Second Amendment rights towards your ability to keep and bear arms. Many of those proposals being fronted, whether it's, you know, requiring insurance, whether it's requiring, you know, persons to go through gun safety courses in order to be approved to have a firearm, whether it's restrictions in taxation on ammunition or other methods that they are proposing, those things will and are going to infringe and abridge our right to keep and bear arms. And the citizenry of this county needs to have the board stand up and tell Sacramento, as many counties can go forward, that we will not support those types of legislations that are being proposed and will impact directly our ability to have the Second Amendment as a right and not as a privilege as they're trying to make it through regulation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live in the city. I'd like to acknowledge that January 27th was International Holocaust Day. The date of remembrance was chosen by the United Nations, marking the anniversary of the liberation in 1945 of the Auschwitz Death Camp, where the Nazi evans were capable of killing 6,000 people a day. Eleven million people were killed during World War II. If those 11 million had weapons, I think the Nazis may have been stopped a little sooner. I've never held a firearm, but I've read the resolution and I support the resolution.
Any other public comments?
Mr. Chair, what's the resolution number?
Resolution 2013.
It doesn't have a number on it yet.
Okay. I am, at this point, unless there's any other public comment, I am going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board for comments, questions. Supervisor Gillen. I must tell you, I'm humbled by what I see here, and I'd like to address some of the comments that patriots have made. And I'm proud to be part of this process. To Steve Odell, talk about bottom up. It's we the people, not we the government. And I want everyone in this room to know, it's we the people. And every one of you here, I think it was this gentleman, I didn't get your name, you were talking about, we are little people. No, sir. We're all people. We're not little. We're not big. We're people. And if you lose sight of your individuality, then you become insignificant, marginalized, and things happen that you don't want to happen. So Rusty, I appreciate your passion. I share it. And I do work for you. I acknowledge that. To all the other gentlemen, Phil and Dale, I think I got everybody's names, thank you so much. And to Bill, a special comment. If not us, who? If this is not the appropriate venue to stand up and assert our rights at this local level of government, then where? Do we wait for Washington to make a pronouncement? Do we wait for Sacramento to make a pronouncement? It's bottom up. And I hope that this board of supervisors at the very community level of government will always feel you have the right to speak up. You have the right to venture your opinion. And yes, Mr. Lonsdale, people have disagreed with me. I don't want you to think that everybody here in this room agrees with me, and that's the beauty of this country. We can agree to disagree. We don't have to be disagreeable. But my right to say this and hear and propose it at this particular venue is everybody's right. And when that disappears, other things disappear. So I want to address that to you. And you know, we've had a lot of discussions on a lot of areas, and I very much respect your opinion, and I hope we can continue to discuss because I learned a great deal from you. So having said that, I want to say I'm very proud to be part of the conduit to have promulgated this proposal and this resolution to this board of supervisors. Thank you. Thank you. Any other board comments? Any other board comments? Supervisor McClure.
I have several. First, I want to say that I too am a gun owner and have fired several weapons in my life and have gone hunting and that kind of thing. My concern here is that we have 27 amendments to the Constitution of the United States. Twenty-six are active because we did repeal the 18th Amendment. And it is my concern that when I took office, I swore an allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and never in my wildest dreams did I think that I would start cherry-picking amendments. Because if you're going to have a resolution to one, you need a resolution to 26. So that's my first alert when I started reading this. My second alert was that I was very, I was kind of alarmed to see that it was the Cooper versus Aaron case of the supremacy clause. Because I think that one of the anthems of the right is that the judiciary does not legislate from the bench. Yet the supremacy clause, which is the Sixth Amendment to the United States Constitution, was brought up as one of the foundations of this resolution. And then I, as I went on and looked at the Heller case, and when I read the Heller case and read Judge Thompson, when I read the opinions of the court, the opinions of the court were very clear, that yes, people are allowed to carry and bear arms. However, there are rules associated with those arms. And in fact, Alito made this comment that we made it clear in the Heller that our holding did not cast doubt on longstanding regulatory measures as prohibitions of the possession of firearms by felons mentally ill and other issues. And what that is, is that it brings to mind for me that following World War II, when there was a plethora of Tommy guns available on the market, the United States government thought, well, you know, maybe we should give it to some of the farmers in the Midwest so they can take care of the rodents and the rabbits. And that's what they did with the Tommy guns. But then it came to the attention that the gangsters of that time were using the Tommy guns against citizens. And so Tommy guns were outlawed. And we can't own a Tommy gun in the United States. Now, can I own my shotgun that I have? Yes. Can I own my little handgun? Yes. But there are limits to what I can do, and there are restrictions. And the Second Amendment to the Constitution allows for that interpretation to happen. So when I also then went on to look at the McDonald versus the City of Chicago case that was also cited in this resolution, it brought to mind that, yes, Chicago overstepped. Chicago was attempting to make it that you couldn't have a handgun. And even in the Heller case in Washington, D.C., when they were limiting the handgun where they weren't allowing registration of the handgun, period, and when they were requiring that the handgun, if there were a gun held in a home, that it had to have a safety on it, that that abridged the Second Amendment to the Constitution. And I agree with the Heller case, and I also agree with the McDonald case in Chicago. But I was very, very dismayed when I read this resolution. And it also brought up Mulberry versus Madison. And if you are a constitutional buff, you'll know that Mulberry versus Madison was when the Supreme Court was given, where it established its right, I think it was in the 18, 18, I'm not sure the date. But when Mulberry versus Madison established, what they did is that Mulberry versus Madison said that the Supreme Court has the ability to insert itself into legislation. And that is one of the primary arguments, I think, of the right, that state rights should supersede federal rights. And that's where the supremacy comes in, on the Sixth Amendment. But the point that I'm trying, I think the biggest point that I'm going to make and why I'm not in favor of this resolution, I will abstain from this resolution, is because I took an oath to uphold the entire Constitution of the United States of America and that took an oath to uphold the entire Constitution of the United States of America and that includes all 26 amendments. Well, really 27, but the Eighteenth doesn't count anymore because we repealed it with the Twenty-First. But for me, I mean, I read and reread the amendments to the Constitution of the United States as I do the Constitution itself. In fact, for me, I keep the Constitution on my iPhone and I read it periodically just to make sure that I understand the significance of this free world that we live in. So for me, to start to cherry pick the Constitution of the United States is an abomination to the Constitution itself. Because I uphold all 26 amendments to this Constitution as I uphold all the articles of the Constitution.
Thank you. Any other supervisors? Okay, at this point, Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Sure.
Supervisor McClure?
Abstain.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Absolutely, yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
The resolution passes. Okay, at this point, we are gonna, we've got some timed items here, we are gonna go to public comment, not related to number four, just public comment in general. So if you have any public comments, please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Supervisor, Chair, do we not get to read the resolution at this time? Or everyone leaves?
I think the, no. No, I think on this, we've, there's nobody to accept the resolution. We'll typically read the resolution if we've got somebody to actually accept it. So it is the position of the board, though, that's supporting the resolution. Okay. Any public comments? Okay. Why don't we take, why don't we take a one-minute recess or three-minute recess and come back?
Good job on the homework.
Springs is doing a sixty-seven million dollar expansion. Their current sewer rates are ten dollars a month. If their city council approves a rate increase, it will go to a maximum of thirty-five dollars a month by the year twenty thirty-one.
Ms. Westphal, is this something that the county board of Supervisors usually deal with?
Yes.
Or is this a city council issue?
This is, I'm getting to that.
Okay.
The average sewer bill in California is forty dollars a month. Our area pays about seventy dollars a month. Again, we're among the highest rates in the state, just like we have some of the highest tipping fees in the state at the transfer station. I ask you, why is that? Now, the reason I'm speaking to the board today is because in two thousand and seven, I paid thirty dollars to the county for a list of assessors parcel numbers, and it was inaccurate. Some were as much as eleven years out of date. And I'd like to purchase a current inaccurate list at a discount. So please let me know when I may pick up that list and what the charges will be.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we are going to close public comment, and we will go to our ten-thirty slash eleven oh four presentation by the air pollution control officer.
Chairman, members of the board, my name is Rick Martin. I'm the air pollution control officer for the North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District. On our board is Supervisor Gitlin, and at our last board meeting, he suggested I come up and speak to you about what we do and how we can serve you and what parts of what we need to do. It involves all three counties that are part of the district. So if you bear with me, like I said, I have a short presentation, and I will try to keep it short because I understand you're running late. Okay, we have, as I mentioned, Supervisor Gitlin serving on our governing board, and we have Supervisor McClure as the alternate. We want to thank both of them for their willingness to help us. The district, we hold one board meeting every year in Crescent City simply to make sure the public has the ability to participate in our board meetings. Generally, it's right around budget time when we do it. So this year's meeting is May sixteenth, twenty thirteen, at one o'clock in these chambers. We will be adopting at that time hopefully the fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget during public hearing as we've done in the last five years in Crescent City. We are a governmental, environmental, regulatory agency, and we are protecting public health and welfare in the district. As I indicated, the district is Trinity County, Humboldt County, and Del Norte County. We have roughly seventy-eight hundred square miles of forest, mountains, and coastline, and we are roughly the size of the state of New Jersey. We monitor air quality. This is a big portion of what I'm going to be talking a little bit about today by measuring criteria air pollutants. Criteria air pollutants are specific air pollutants EPA has set aside to monitor because they have the largest ability of causing problems to the general public. One of these is particulate matter. Particulate matter is basically just dirt and dust in the air. Some of it we can see, some of it we can't, but it is a very significant pollutant that we need to monitor. We permit, regulate businesses. That includes gas stations, power plants, lumber mills, anybody that has the potential to put air pollution into the air. We administer the burn program for residential and agricultural burning, both smoke management plans and burn permits. We administer grant programs, and this is one of them that I really want to focus on today because I believe a lot of people kind of overlook this, and we encourage awareness of our shared air resources through public outreach. This is, to give you an idea of what we're talking about, if you'll see on the, excuse me, picture on the left is a human hair. It's roughly seventy micrograms in diameter, and on the right-hand side, you'll see a cross section. The little yellow piece on the left is PM ten, which is very small, particulate matter of ten microns and smaller, and PM two point five is particulate matter of two point five microns and smaller. So you'll see it's much, much smaller than even a human hair. These fine particles or the PM two point five, as I will refer to them, they can cause respiratory diseases, decrease lung function, asthma attacks, heart attacks, and premature death. Certain studies recently have indicated that the smaller the particle, the greater the potential is for the health risk. The main reason for that is it gets down into the very deep reaches of the lung and can't be expelled by the body. So it's an organism that gets down there, not really an organism, a particle that gets down there, and they've actually found that cancer can form around it and causes, like I said, heart attacks and premature death and other things. This is our PM two point five status for the federal annual standard. Right now, for all three counties, we are either attainment or nonclassified slash attainment. They're essentially the same thing. It's a certain definition that EPA has come up with. The annual standard for particulate matter two point five is calculated by averaging the three most recent years of data. Whenever the standard is equal or less than twelve micrograms per cubic meter. Now, I want to back up just a minute to the picture. I want to point out to you, if I can here, there we go. The cross-section of the hair again, a cubic meter is roughly the size of a washing machine. And the standard is that there are twelve of those smaller particles within the size of a washing machine, and that's how we measure it, and that's how we count it, and that's how difficult it is to make sure that PM two point five is managed. We have, right now, monitoring need in Del Norte County. We have a PM ten monitor here currently on the Health Department building, but what we need to do is move a PM two point five monitor up here now, and the PM two point five monitor is roughly the size of that little chamber there. That's actually the storage site, and the monitor goes on the inside for protection. We need a flat roof. It's about two hundred pounds, not much more than that, and we're currently working with Supervisor Gitlin and others to try to find a location. We're also going through revisions to our Regulation Two, which is open burning. Every ten years, we have to show the state that we have an equal or more restrictive regulation than what the state rule is. Reg Two has exceptions in it that allow burn barrels and allow burning of material, non-glossy paper and cardboard, in the burn barrel only. No trash, no garbage, no sewage, nothing like that. Crescent City has a separate city ordinance that prohibits burning within the city limits Three dollars from every residential burn permit that we collect goes back to local fire departments. We've had almost twenty-four hundred dollars returned to Del Norte County in nineteen, or in twenty twelve, and since the inception of our rule and regulation, the fire departments in Del Norte have received roughly twenty-five thousand dollars. This is district budget for two thousand twelve and thirteen. The total expenses are almost two million dollars. Total income was just under two million dollars, and the difference there is fifty thousand dollars was designated from our reserve fund. We are looking at buying a new building, and we needed to make sure and have our due diligence to make sure we didn't have any problems with the building. Major programs administered by the district are the Carl Moyer Assistance Program, the lower emission school bus program, and the wood stove replacement program. In the last five years, we've distributed a little over three million dollars in Moyer funding to local projects in Del Norte, Humboldt, and Trinity Counties. And I must say that I have asked every single year for more money than we've received. We unfortunately only get about three hundred thousand dollars a year, and some of these projects can be extremely high in cost. We work with marine vessels, agricultural tractors, heavy-duty on-road and off-road equipment, and almost five hundred, or just a little over four hundred thousand in Carl Moyer came back to Del Norte County. This shows where the projects are. In two thousand eight, we helped replace an engine on resolution, a fishing boat, in the amount of sixty-one thousand dollars. In two thousand eight, another fishing vessel was replaced, Beverly Bee, forty-four thousand dollars. In two thousand eleven, we had another fishing vessel, the Lady Renee, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And then in two thousand twelve, it was off-road equipment replacement for the Alexandra Dairy, a hundred thousand dollars, and this year, fishing vessel, Pacific Pride, for eighty The lower emission school bus program, this is a program, I think I've spoken to you before, but it was a fixed amount of money for us. It was three million dollars to replace or retrofit diesel engines on school buses. Diesel exhaust has been identified as a toxic air pollutant, and our children have been riding in those buses with diesel engines, and we really needed to get them cleaned up. We funded a hundred percent of all the buses that were needed to run daily bus routes in all three district counties. The program was completed June thirtieth of twenty eleven. They still have to send in reports, and we still have to make inspections. Three hundred and sixty thousand of additional funding we used to replace another bus, and our program was recognized by the California Air Resources Board as one of the most effective programs in the state. Over a million of the three million dollars came to Del Norte County. Wood stove replacement program, this is one program I'd really like to do more outreach in Del Norte County. We assist people in purchasing new EPA-certified wood stoves. When we do that, then the emissions from the wood stoves are reduced substantially. We provide a five hundred dollar grant per household, and granted, with the wood stove at twenty-five hundred dollars or three thousand dollars, five hundred doesn't sound like a lot, but five hundred dollars can make the difference sometimes by somebody being able to buy one and not being able to buy one. We've awarded over fifty thousand dollars in the last few years, and we have another grant cycle that will be coming up at the end of this year. And we publish in the newspapers in all three counties, and we post it on our website, and we try to get as much information out as possible. I'd love to be able to send some more information up here for distribution to the general public. This is a summary of the funding. Carl Moyer, four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Fire department burn permit, two thousand three hundred, and total funding, four hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Backing the local economy here in Del Norte just last year. And with that, I think I'm at questions.
Any questions from Supervisors? Yes, Supervisor Gitlin.
First of all, I'd like to publicly acknowledge Director Rick Martin. I can't tell you how impressed I was when you gave me the Cook's Tour down there and what you guys do, and I already know we have the cleanest air in the states, but we need to get you your site for the measuring of the particulates. I don't want to help you do that. I think I referred you to Ed Fulton, and whatever we can do to help facilitate that, to ascertain what we already know, which was we have the cleanest air in the county. And I just want to say anything we can do to help you. And are you at liberty to discuss, Rick, your new location? Because I will tell you that Rick gave me a tour of his facility, excuse me, and it's woefully overcrowded, I mean, to say the least. I'm guessing we met eleven or twelve employees.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. And they were in a house, an old converted house, that they're really riot all over each other. And again, it's a testament to you, Rick, that you have such great staff. They work well with one another. They're very collegial. They're doing important work, and I'm really happy to see that you're finding larger facilities. And when you do that, you make that announcement. I also want to mention that you're going to have a piece of real estate open for rent. And I suggested to Rick that perhaps instead of getting it to another state agency to rent, to actually go private and rent it to someone in the private community, create some new dollars that will come into the state's coffers and offset your budget, and you were very amenable to that, and that's a great way to partner the state with private enterprise so some future business in Eureka will rent your old facility. So having said that, tell us about your new facility.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Gitlin. The new facility is about fifteen hundred square feet larger. It's set up more of an office environment instead of a house, so we'll have the ability to set up cubicles for people to work in much easier, much cheaper. The facility has been owned ever since it's, it actually was built by AAA, American Automobile Association, and they have owned it for the last thirty years. They have split the way they work internally, and right now, they have a building that's got about five people working on it, and they want to move them to another location. And we just happen to be very fortunate in sending them a note, a non-binding offer before it was even put on the market, and we had very, very positive results back from them. So we will be moving probably in the next several, eight months, I would imagine.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from Supervisors?
Yes.
Supervisor Henningson.
Yeah, Rick, yeah, thanks for coming up. You mentioned that you're putting in, is this a new monitoring system? You want to put a new one in, or do you have one here now?
We have one here now that is measuring the wrong size of particle, and it has been for a while. The federal government, for many years, has been reducing the standard that people are allowed to meet and changing some of it. So instead of it being about being PM ten, it's now PM two point five, so we need to switch the monitor out. We also want to do constant monitoring. Instead of every sixth day is what we do now with a filter, we'd rather put an instrument in that can measure it twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and that gives us a much, much better idea of what the air quality is like. Supervisor Gitlin said to me, get the best air quality. It is really, really good, but with the standards being continually lowered by the federal government, we have to make sure that everybody is still in attainment. We'd have no reason to believe that we're not. We just need to make sure that we measure it to prove it.
Yeah, which was going to be my question, and what industry is it that we have that you would think that would be increasing?
I would guess that probably the largest group that would contribute to that would be the Forest Service, and whenever they do burning, or whenever there's forest fires, or whenever there's any large acreage that's burning, there's a tremendous amount of pollution that goes out in the air. I did a paper that I was able to read in Athens, Greece, to an international audience on the emissions from the forest fires that we had in two thousand eight in Trinity County and Siskiyou County. There was more carbon monoxide put out in the air during that period of time than what Los Angeles puts in the air for an entire year, and that time period was about four months, so.
Sounds like a strong argument for forest management, is what it sounds like.
We do want to manage the forests. It's great, but we just need to do it right, that's all.
Now, do you deal with serpentine asbestos?
Yes, we do.
And is there, is there progress going along? Is this, is this part of the particulate matter that you're talking about? I mean, is this, and I don't know what particulates you're talking about. Is it just any particulate matter, or is it?
Yeah, we handle the asbestos a little bit differently. We do monitor just for total particulate with both the PM two point five and the PM ten. So right now, we just want to know the total amount of dirt and dust in the air. We do handle asbestos a little differently. We can pull a sample and run it and have it analyzed to make sure that it is asbestos. It's very difficult to know just by looking at it whether it is or not. There are some that are more common than others, and those are the ones we generally pick up. We also deal with asbestos on the inside of buildings, so we deal with asbestos a little bit differently.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Director Martin, for coming up.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Okay. So right now, we have another timed presentation that was at ten forty-five, the Battery Point Lighthouse presentation, and Mr. Serena, are you leading the charge on this one?
I'm going to do the primary amount of talking because Barbara is going to run the PowerPoint. I would like to say that Barbara did the primary work on this as the lead for the county from the RFP on. But originally, this project started in two thousand ten. Supervisor McClure had brought this forward from the aspect of the historical society and the need to deal with the problem, primarily a crack in the metal roof on the lantern, Lantern House, and had come forward indicating that the historical society felt they could come up with a considerable amount of money through donations and funding, and that, and she also took the lead in going forward to talk with the Coastal Conservancy as well as a private foundation. In addition, there were, there's the county's annual donation to the historical society, and then there was in-kind time from staff from the county. Ultimately, what happened was that funding was secured for the majority of this job, allowing us to then go out to bid, and RFP was provided. Barbara was the primary source of putting together that RFP, and ultimately, we were successful in being able to define a project. Stover Engineering was the engineer of record on this, as well as the construction manager on site. Jim Carnegie was the financial manager that oversaw the day-to-day processing of claims along with Barbara. And ultimately, the problem was there's a crack in a metal roof, and how do you fix it? And there were a couple of ways to go about it, and I think to better understand what metal stitching is, I'll have Ryan come up and give a very short statement of the actual aspect of metal stitching on this roof, because it was, it was one of the most complicated parts, so if Ryan would help me out, I'd appreciate that.
Come on up, Brian.
This is Ryan Young from Stover Engineering.
Hello. This is actually part of the most fascinating part of the project, and looking at this picture, I can, I'll describe to you what we're looking at. The metal stitching is something I never heard of until this project, and I had to do quite a bit of research to figure out what it is. And it's actually a patented process by one company in the United States, and as you can imagine, they stay pretty busy with that type of a patent on an idea. And what you're looking at here is, it looks like a weld, but our roof for the lighthouse is actually cast iron. And I don't know what you know about welding, but in order to weld cast iron, it has to be heated up to about seventeen hundred degrees before it can actually be welded successfully. And that would have to be done to the entire roof, so we'd have to take the roof off, most likely, go heat it up somewhere and weld it, and then put it back on, which would not be very feasible. So this process, which was developed by a company called Lock &amp; Stitch, actually inserts metal pins into the crack, and those pins are threaded and screwed into the crack, and then they use a series of rods, which is the stitch part, that are also tied into those threads, and then the pins are screwed into the rods and pull the crack together, kind of like a wedge. So what you end up with is a repair of a crack without having to heat up the metal or weld it that essentially acts as a weld. And ended up, the crack in the roof, we thought was about eighteen inches long and a quarter inch wide. Once we took the paint off and got down to it, it was closer to, well, three sixteenths there, approaching three eighths of an inch, which is really wide gap, and it was close to twenty-seven or twenty-eight inches long. And they were able to repair this using this method in a matter of two days. Each one of those, what looked like weld beads, are actually individual pins that are drilled and threaded into that crack. Then they're peen-hammered, just like a ball peen hammer, only they use a pneumatic hammer that rapidly hammers it, and you end up with a smooth welded, or weld appearance of the crack, which is now completely closed and sealed, and then was recoded, which ended up being a very successful repair, also very expensive, but that was, and thanks to the grant, we were able to seal up the roof and prevent a lot of water damage that was occurring. We also took the opportunity to sandblast and treat the metal surfaces inside and out and recoat them with epoxy urethane, which will protect them from rust for an extremely long time. So it was a fun project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on that process.
Some of the other work that was...
Oh, you did have a question. Ryan, this is fascinating, this, I was looking at the picture. Is the stitching done as if it were, and I'm using my, the only way I know what stitching is, a needle and a thread? So is the stitching concept the same, or is it a machine? I'm just, I've never heard of this metal stitching.
Yeah, actually, I had the same thought when I heard of it first, was they're going, they got some kind of metal wire that they thread through there. It's actually just as simple as it looks. It's more of a patented idea. It's just a small, think of a screw that's about the diameter, the same diameter as the crack, actually, with threads. They use a drill, and they drill a hole into the crack and thread that hole, and then screw this pin into it. Then they have a metal rod, which is about two inches long, and those are the stitches. What the pictures don't show very clearly are, because this was before the metal rods were installed, they are installed about every four to six inches. So it looks like if you had a cut on your arm and it was stitched up, you see the crack and then these rods every four inches, so it looks like it was stitched, but it's just an appearance. So, yeah, it's not stitched like you would think, but they call it metal stitching because they repair cracks without heating and welding, so it's just stitched together.
Yep.
Jay.
Some of the other work that was done to the lantern room itself, as you can see, some of the pictures of the work done on the metal around the lantern and the glazing, and all of that was refurbished and repainted. If you go up there now, it looks brand new. As you, as we progressed through that, you know, you have a hundred and fifty-plus-year-old facility, so you, it's not like you want to go out and recreate all of the metal work. So it was, it was fortunate that it's maintained over the number of years and was able to be basically rehabbed. It looks virtually brand new when you're out there now with all of the paint work that was done inside and out. As we go on, you'll see some of the work that was done on the railings, and, you know, the keeper's walk is not accessible to the general public, but it shouldn't have been accessible to anybody because, as you can see, there wasn't much of a railing. And one of the cool parts about my job is I get to go out there and inspect these things, so I was able to actually get out on the keeper's walk after it was rehabbed, and the railing is historically accurate, and, you know, the work that was done there was in tune with the, what the lighthouse was. You can see on this picture, there, the railing goes into and supports part of that lighthouse, and so it was very difficult in some of the, in the case of some of these, to come up with an idea of how to actually get these things rehabbed and, without doing too much work, which meant additional money. But when you go out there, obviously, it's a, it's a great view from up there. You know, once you get into the lighthouse, you can't be beat looking back over the harbor and out on, out to sea. You can see in this picture that entire upper portion was repainted. The railing is all brand new. It ended up being quite a sight while you're out there. One of the more significant portions of the work was interior, which was the electrical work. This is the old electrical panel. There were mercury switches still in existence and in working order, and it is, part of the project was to retain the historical value, and this is all still there. You can see some of the conduit that's there, but there's a new electrical panel that modernizes the lighthouse. And when we were out there, there was no water at the bottom of it, but it was fairly dry out, too, so the leak has been fixed from the roof. There were a couple of things that were proposed originally, included doing some stucco work on the inside, but in order to retain the brick work and the original appearance, that actually was changed out for some additional work, which was primarily painting. On the exterior, as you can see, from the next slide, the granite steps, and they're pretty impressive granite steps, had some need to be replaced. The good part about this is they were replaced with concrete steps, and they retained the original slabs of granite to be used as benches on the site. You can see the new railing. You can see the new concrete steps. That all leads down to the trails, and part of the funding was specifically to have the trails rehabbed because you get anywhere from nineteen to two thousand, or twenty thousand people that come out to the lighthouse annually, and these trails now are in such a condition to be able to take that number for a few years at least. It's very popular. Even when we were out there in the dead of winter, there were people out on a... It's very popular. Even when we were out there in the dead of winter, there were people out on a pretty nice day, but they were out in that area. Barbara was able to speak with the National Park Service and get graphics for interpretive signs. And as you can see, the, we'll have tide pools, and I believe we have whales, and then we have birds. The actual interpretive signage was done by Redwood Welding. It was a design that we sent to them, and then he fabricated to the, to the design and the signs that we have. And as I told Jessica yesterday, these are not penguins. These are common mewers. It's a common bird around here. So, if anybody asks you why we have penguins on one of our interpretive signs, they're not penguins. Go out, read about them, and all of the information is there. So, in general terms, this is one of those projects that is a, it ended up being an excellent project. It needed to be done. 150-year-old lighthouse that is owned by the county and in partnership through a lease with the Historical Society continues to be operated. One of those things that we don't tend to get the word out well on our projects, but the board has asked us to come forward and present these as we come up. And it's an excellent project, ended up on budget, and required a lot of thought. It's a site that isn't always accessible, so in the middle of summertime, the tide's in. You may not be able to get out to the lighthouse. And so, the contractor had his issues. Construction manager had their issues as we went through this. But ultimately, it ended up being an excellent project, funded with, you know, like I said, the Coastal Conservancy was about $100,000. There was donations through the Historical Society of about 40,000. County has a contribution annually to the Historical Society. And there was a private foundation that doesn't like to be advertised, but they gave a significant amount of money also. So, great project, great structure, and definitely an asset to our community.
I hope. Thank you. Any questions from supervisors?
I would just like to comment that staff did an absolute wonderful job in making this happen and that, like Jay said, that there are about 19,000 people a year that actually go through the lighthouse. That's not including the number of people who go out on the rock. And we, the keepers are there, are volunteers. And I think that Dottie has them reserved through 2014, because people really love the lighthouse. And when they come, they stay there, they give the tours, and they make sure that their house is tidy so 19,000 people can go through it, which would be very difficult for me.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
I know Supervisor Sullivan, you talked about visiting different county-owned assets. Perhaps if we can schedule one here where supervisors might wanna up close and personal inspect that walk?
Yeah. I think that's a good call. We're gonna do that in late spring, summer, for sure, because we are not going up in the middle of winter on that one. High tide?
Yeah.
One last thing. Mr. Bennett passed me a note as I came in today, and he wanted me to, I believe, state that there was additional improvements that have been done out there. And it was actually identification of wildflowers on the island had been also completed. And, you know, that was nice to know that they've been out there doing work also. So, a lot of attention to the island.
Well, good project. And I know Supervisor McClure was pretty instrumental in involvement on that, so congratulations on that.
And the little, the little pink flowers that bloom? Those were brought by the first keeper, that they planted them there, and they came from another lighthouse.
All right. Supervisor Gill.
And again, I just wanna throw my underscore and appreciation to Barbara and Jim. Well done. And Jay, it's a wonderful experience. The lighthouse is my neighbor. I appreciate that. Now, they built up the neighborhood. I guess I have to do something else now. But it's just wonderful to see that this iconic point of Delmar County, probably the most, one of the most iconic points in our county, is being kept up to its high standard. And just to remind you that we do have another lighthouse in Delmar County. It might be a little more difficult to get to, but we have some issues there that we'll be bringing up in the next few weeks and how we can keep those restorations going forward and letting the public know that they do have access to that, hopefully, in the sooner, in the immediate future. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm just gonna add that the stitching, why we looked for the stitching, was because of the catastrophic event that happened with the other lighthouse, when they tried to bring the lid in, and it hit the sand.
It busted.
Yeah. And that's the reason that we found the people to do the stitching.
That was an expensive process, too, if I remember. Okay. So, we are gonna go to our next timed item, which was about 38 minutes ago. We have an 11 o'clock, conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments related to the proposed updated housing rehab program guidelines and approve and adopt by resolution the proposed updating housing rehab program guidelines as requested by the County Ministry of Officer. Mr. Carnegie, are you leading this, or is? Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Rick, too, by the way. Then Janine.
They're pointing to you, Janine.
You take, for this, sure. Janine, are you taking the lead here?
It has my name on it, but we'll leave it up to Janine on this one.
Good morning.
Good morning. I didn't think you'd see me up here for a while.
I haven't, yeah.
Yeah. It's kinda like the mafia, you keep getting pulled back in, huh?
So, we're asking you today to conduct a public hearing for the purposes of updating our new program guidelines for the housing rehabilitation program. And we have a sign-up sheet for any individuals of the public who would like to provide some input. So.
Should've held it first.
So, not that, and no public is here that I'm aware of. More than 10 years ago, the Board of Supervisors adopted the current guidelines that we have that, for our program income and for our housing rehabilitation program. And they've been a little bit outdated. Also, the housing market has changed substantially in the last few years. At one time, when we provided housing rehab for low-income individuals who owned their homes, it was with the idea, too, that those homes would appreciate through the years. As some of you are aware, or most of you are aware, that hasn't been the case with the downturn in the market that occurred in 2008, 2009. And some of our homes are worth less than what the loans that we have on them. So, these guidelines are a little more strict about the debt ratio and also provides some different methods of payment where you may just pay your interest. You don't have the entire payment deferred. Now, some people make a payment that's principal and interest. Some, at this point, are just making principal payment, and this would allow them to make just an interest payment. Just a little bit more flexibility. It also increases the amount of the rehabilitation loan from 50,000 to 60,000, and $100,000 for reconstruction. It also is a little bit more stringent about the requirements and gives the loan committee the ability to foreclose on someone who doesn't keep current on their insurance, which has been a problem for us. And one of the last areas is that the debt ratio is a little bit, little bit higher. They have, I'm, well, actually, I'm lowering, we've lowered it so that they have to be able to afford to make the payments on this, on the loan, a little bit better than they have in the past. At the moment, we do not have a current open CDBG grant that has any funding available, and we don't anticipate to have any for the rest, for the balance of this fiscal year or this calendar year. And, but we do have some program income money. So, as people repay loans or houses sold, there is money to lend. So, these guidelines still need to be updated. And I'm open for any questions.
Any questions? Supervisor McClure?
Oh, I'm sorry. And there's no modulars in parks. We will not be loaning money to modulars in parks. That has proven not to be in our best interest.
Any other questions or comments from supervisors? Okay. Any public comment? Okay. The public comment, the hearing's been opened. And we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. And bring it back to the board. Any other board comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the updated housing rehabilitation program guidelines as presented.
Second.
Okay. Tony, could you please pull the button?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gatlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. That's been moved and approved. Thanks for your work on that. Okay. At this point, we'll go to legislative and budget matters. Consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delmar. Authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments.
The board should have a handout of a number of bills that are of interest to Delmar County. We have approximately, well, less than 30 days to comment on those for support or otherwise. Those were sent through Peterson Consulting. We also have a pile of spot bills. They're upstairs.
A pile? That's probably appropriate.
It's thick. There is 2,900 bills that are out there right now, including spot bills. And so, they're available. We did print those off. The public can take a look at them if they would so choose. The board has the ability to look at them in the hard copy or online. But right now, the, I think the most of concern is the list that we provided to the board to take a look at. And then, we may be coming forward with letters of support or not regarding some of those that are most appropriate to Delmar County. And as Supervisor Sullivan brought forward the Assembly Joint Resolution in regards to the SRS issue, it's out there. That, you know, as far as getting support, I think we're going to have to get our advocates involved, which they have been, and we're gonna have to be directly involved in the discussions. It's, I think it's very important that we are able to accurately describe what the issues are in rural counties, especially those that have such remote roads. The schools, obviously, you know, that's an obvious issue. But in regards to our roads and our road department, the issue of tremendous road mileage and the amount of effort it takes in order to provide that access into federal lands. And I, it's been difficult for our advocates to describe what our situation is here, because people are just not familiar with that remote of an area. And I think that's gonna be our job, is to clearly identify that and to describe that and hopefully get people at the federal level to understand it a little bit better. And so, in the next, prior to the next meeting, if you have any comments regarding the legislation that I provided, please get those to me. We'll provide letters and for board consideration for any of those that need that type of a support or discussion. As far as the budget, we have been having some mid-year budget meetings. We've met with two departments that had some discrepancies in their numbers that they submitted. And I think we've gotten the community development departments as accurate at this point. The probation department will be coming back with some changes to their budget after they had a discussion with us. And we'll be meeting with the sheriff, jail budget, their group, later this week, I believe it is, to take a look at, you know, any type of revenues that are not being met and/or extraordinary expenses that are coming up. We do have some questions about those, and we want, we need more information. And then, I would hope to provide the board with a mid-year budget letter to describe those issues and then discuss if there is any need to do mid-year changes or plans. At this point, the majority of the budgets look to be on point. And the, right now, sales tax is slightly up. But obviously, we continue to have additional expenses related to our health plan impurs. And we'll, you know, we've been working on those now for a couple of years to try to bring down some of those costs. So, we will be addressing that through a report to the board here in the next couple of meetings.
All right. Any questions, comments from supervisors?
Just comments. Thanks for the report from Peterson Associates. We're gonna be back in DC starting on Fri, Saturday, meeting National Association of Counties Legislative Days. We're gonna take some of those that were consistent with the state association priorities. Thanks to Supervisor, as well now he's the Assemblyman Dolly from Lassen County doing that resolution. He understands it's a federal issue, not a state issue, but it'd be nice to have the support. CSAC also has that as one of their priorities. Along that lines, I just can't help myself here. There is an email that I forwarded to UJ regarding the suction dredging ban, which is being brought forward by Supervisor Gatlin's new friend and old friend of mine, Ray Nutting, in Eldorado County appropriately. And we didn't assign him that last name, by the way, either. That is his name. In calling for some, the, to invoke the supremacy clause of the federal government against the state of California, which I guess might appear to some to be contradictory to the position we just took with the Second Amendment. So, it's funny how these things develop. But Jay, you might take a look at that email I forwarded you, how that suction dredging, it might affect us financially as well as resource base. Enough said.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. At this point, we're going to adjourn the meeting.